Approve items one through four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made in seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Items one through four pass. Uh, call to the public, item number five. Uh, I would note that there's a three-minute. Hey, thank you. I would note, this is being recorded. It will be on the town's website. Probably tomorrow. Let's go to the consent agenda, which are items one through four. Number one, acceptance into the public record of the March twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two paid bills. Item number two, acceptance of the cash receipts and dispersalence report for January of two thousand and twenty-two. Item three, acceptance of the cash receipts and dispersalence report for February two thousand and twenty-two. And item four, approve temporary street closures of Ho-Hum adjacent to the Sanderson Lincoln Pavilion from eight AM to two PM on April twenty-third for the Carefree Earth Day celebration. Do any of the council members have any questions or comments relative to items numbers one through four? Hearing none would accept the motion to approve items one through four.
I move that we accept items one through four.
I actually, I apologize. I have a question regarding the street closure.
In control.
The, the, how will the businesses be affected that day?
Yeah. This is the street. We both have the garden. And one side.
It's the same street that's closed during the.
During the, the farmer's market. Okay, so it's just business as usual with that. Okay, then no additional questions. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to approve items one through four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made in seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Items one through four pass. Uh, call to the public, item number five. Uh, I would note that there's a three-minute maximum here. And we have a number of people who would like to speak. Don Little, would you please come up to the podium?
I just wanted to, uh, say something about the, uh, the hotel that's becoming in addition to Carefree. Uh, very excited about the hotel, obviously as a business owner here in Carefree and now a second business owner. Uh, obviously, it's gonna pay for me to have that hotel. Uh, I just also wanted to say, once I heard about this hotel coming in, uh, that I was always very excited about it and I thought it was gonna be great for the town. Uh, at some point I did see some feedback, I guess on social media, some people complaining about it. Uh, and I remember when I saw that I actually walked down there to take a look at it and tried to figure out what the complaint was. Uh, and I really didn't see a problem other than I wasn't really keen on the yellow, you know, the coloring maybe of the building. Uh, I would have liked maybe more earth tones, but other than that, uh, I just want to say I'm very excited about the hotel. Uh, I think it's something the town needed. Uh, and as I thought about it, I think about when I visit my family back in New England, they live in small towns. And when we go to visit them, they say, come stay with us. That's the last thing I want to do. So that's the exciting thing to me is now, uh, you know, even since we opened the bike shop, fifty percent of the people walking in are from out of town. They're here visiting family, right? So now they have somewhere to stay, uh, they can run around in underwear just like they do at home instead of going and seeing them. So anyway, I'm excited about that, that we have another option.
Thank you.
And that's it.
While, while you're there, Don, could you please tell us a little bit about your new business?
Well, I wanted to start with that, actually. Uh, yeah, so my wife and I own Black Mountain Coffee Shop. We've owned it for almost five years. Uh, we've set, set records every year, even in two thousand and twenty, and we had a setback for a while there. And, uh, in fact, we just had our best month we've ever had. And, uh, so I had a dream about ten years ago to do this bicycle coffee shop endeavor. And that was back in September when I saw Ten Easy Street for sale. And when I walked on the backside of it and I saw that it had glass doors on the cape side as well, I said, well, there's my building, so. Uh, anyway, we've been doing just about thirty days now and, uh, we're doing numbers that I didn't think we'd be doing already. We've already rented a lot of bikes and sold a lot of bikes. Uh, and after the final health inspector on Thursday, we're selling coffee and espresso drinks and smoothies. Uh, I invite everybody to come try a bike. Anyway, we've got electric assist bikes, mountain bikes, road bikes, gravel bikes. Uh, I've got a really good right-hand man with me, Mike over there. Anyway, happy to be here and, uh, I kind of got, I got rid of a corporate job I had a few months ago because we were, my wife and I were juggling too many things. It feels good to just kind of be back in the Carefree community. So, that's it.
Well, welcome. It's good to have you and good luck on the new business.
Hey, Don, quick question. Don, quick question for you. No. And besides, besides sales and rentals, do you guys also do repairs, maintenance?
We do. In fact, that's the one guy, Mike, that I have is, is a master technician. He's amazing. So, yes, we do. Yeah.
And Don, just so you know, my wife loves her bike.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you. John Mast. John, I think you have two and we're gonna hold the second one for number eight. Is that correct?
Number eight, sir.
Correct.
Um, I've sent council a email about, uh, information that I received from Benefits, uh, oh, it's BCN, I can't remember what it stands for. Anyway, they're a financial company. They send out quarterly and sometimes monthly, lately it's been monthly, as to what's happening with the economy. I don't know if the town gets anything. I'm assuming they do from another agency. But inflation's at almost seven percent within the last month. It's doing nothing but growing up. If you've been to the gas station or grocery store, which most people do, you see there's been quite an increase. The third quarter looks like it's gonna be higher inflation and possibly stagflation, which is the worst. It's gonna be a recession according to the experts and inflation. And it's the end of the fiat dollar. Russia, who's been in the news lately, is now backed by gold, the ruble. Uh, India's doing, be doing the same thing. China's gonna be doing the same thing. And what's gonna happen to the petrodollar? Going by the. That's just facts. For what?
Excuse me, just let's.
Thank you. Anyway, sorry for the interruption. The council, which is also the water board, which is also the utility facility, does sort of a monopoly, uh, raised an eighteen million dollar bond issue, which is actually thirty-two million at the end when it's paid off. That was approved in the last, uh, few years. Two years. Four full-time positions. Were either contract or part-time. They're now full-time. With what we're going into economically, I think that's a very bad thing to do and hopefully somebody will start looking into how are we gonna tighten our belt? The prices that if you see in Germany, and I know right now that doesn't affect us, but it will, in the last two days, they've raised prices twenty to fifty percent on food items, petrol items. They're not talking about not taking oil from Russia. I don't know where they plan on getting it. That's, it's, it's a dire situation in my opinion. I think the council ought to take a look at a number of financial items that we're gonna be addressing in the near future and see, do we want to do that now? Do we want to spend a tax reserves? So, thank you.
Thank you. Maureen Benedetto? I disagree with a number of those statements, but we won't get into them now. Item number six, current events. John, I believe you had a number.
We have a few things to talk about. This past Saturday, the Wheels and Wheels and the sixtieth anniversary of the airport celebration occurred, uh, at Sky Ranch. And it was quite successful. They went out there, they had about more than a hundred cars, classic cars, lots of airplanes. They, they, uh, reported about five thousand people passed through over the four hours. Uh, they, they had assistance from the Foothills Carrying Corps. Shuttle, they provided a shuttle service. And at the end, they collected about fifteen hundred dollars. So it's really a great event. Uh, a lot of happy customers. And if you missed it, you missed a good thing. Uh, secondly, the Saturday, we do, we have the fourth and final garden seminar. It'll be in the council chambers, unlike the first one, they're really. And this talk will be Florida Fauna of Namibia, which is located just northwest of South Africa. It's, it's presented by Scott McMahon, who was the manager of the cactus collection at the Desert Botanical Garden in Phoenix. So if you come, wait, I've seen your presentation. It's great photographs. And he's an expert on cactus and desert vegetation. So if you're not interested in the things that are going on in Africa, you come in here and ask, ask him some questions about what's going on in your garden. He's just an expert. He's presented to us before and, uh, I encourage you to come. And finally, on Saturday, the twenty-third of April, we have another Earth Day program in the pavilion. So we did it a year ago and this year it's, it'll be even better. So we have the Desert Plant Trust will be there. Tonto National Forest, the county will be there talking about managing invasive species. Rattlesnake Solutions will bring uh, some rattlesnakes in boxes, bothered hard to be there with predator birds that they're rescued and are rehabilitating. It's all free. So that's from Saturday, the twenty-third, from nine AM until one PM. It, it's fun. Uh, it's, it's, you'll learn something. It's great for kids. The splash pad's working, but come on out. That's it.
Thank you. Any further, uh, comments from the council? Things that are coming up? Mike?
Well, I'd like to compliment the organizers of Wings and Wheels, especially Vice Mayor Crane. And it's, it's meant to be a heartfelt one. We, we're lucky. We got to be a participant in the show and the cars were just great, the planes were great. The people there that were walking around organizing, making sure everything went well. Everybody was very courteous and it's a super event. I recommend it for anybody next time.
In fact, the real credit goes to Les Hardy, who's a resident who organized.
Correct.
And then the guys at the airport who allowed him to use the, the airport, shut it down for basically a day and brought all those vehicles. They did a great job.
Parking was good and all that. Very well done.
Good. Anything else? Hearing none, let's go on to item number seven. This is an interesting one, drawing of the names of candidates for mayor and council to determine the order of the listings of the names in the August second, two thousand and twenty-two primary election ballot pursuant to ARS sixteen dash four-six-four C. It's my understanding that if, if, for example, in Phoenix, they'll rotate every fifty thousand the positions of the candidates on there. Since we have roughly two thousand registered voters here, we don't come up to their qualifications. So, uh, it's a drawing is the most equitable way and Candace is going to do that before our very eyes. Now, uh, if you would like to explain what it is you're doing and, and how this is gonna go?
Mayor and council, yes, I would, just for a little bit of background. As referenced in the agenda item, um, each of the candidates were notified that we'd be doing this drawing today. Um, we have a clear bowl here with all the names in it. They will be folded in half evenly. The, to provide some necessary background, as you stated, the town of Carefree has a relatively small population of voters and only a single precinct. So we don't rise to the ability of rotating every name to the top of the ballot. With that being said, we do have more than six candidates. So statutorily, the best practice is to draw a lot. And that will be reported to the, to Maricopa County tonight. I will go back after the meeting, after everything is done here, and I'll report that back to them so that they can begin the draft ballot. They do send out a draft that will go up to all the candidates, um, so that they have an opportunity to confirm that everything is the way that it was shown in the meeting tonight, as well as check the spelling of their names. So with that in mind, um, how we're gonna proceed is the name of the council candidates and the mayoral candidates are in this bowl. For those that have submitted a number, the sufficient number of petitions as of five o'clock last night. The office being sought and their name is on each piece, including, like I said, the mayor and the council. We'll fold each one in half. I will draw that name. That seat will then be, that will be the, the number in which they're on the ballot. So once we run into a mayoral candidate in this, obviously the first one pulled will be the first one on the list. Okay, any questions from the council before I proceed?
Will Mike be writing them down as you draw them?
Yes, yeah. And everybody else is welcome as well.
I just have one question. Yes. I don't think this is the first time that there's been more than six, six people running for council and we never did this before, so I'm just wondering.
Actually, they did. Um, it has been several years long before I've been here and I've been here ten years. But my predecessor, I did go back and check, and Betsy Wise did actually do the same thing at one point.
At the last election, weren't there like nine people on that?
There weren't enough statutorily for that to have met, met the, the seating challenge. So once we have this many, it becomes an issue. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right.
Your bracelet. Okay, thank you. That's the order that they will appear. The two mayoral candidates will be in the order chosen and then the, uh, the council candidate as well. Thank you. I'd like to welcome Commander Dan. Thank you. We would welcome you to come back. I think you've just finished your seventy-fifth anniversary?
Well, we've got a whole year that we're planning to celebrate that version. On May, March nineteenth, we're going to work the veteran celebration. We're trying to make that USO shows. So it was basically, it had down. Our next event coming up. This, this week we're going to have four men on the fifth shore. There's only sixty-four alive. There were four on the shore that are all pretty. And I feel it's quite a lot. Next event, the graves, uh, place first, it was for grave. Whether you remember what goes in that, it's a lot to come in and maybe have a, in the USO, it'll be a powerful. And it's gonna be open to the public, showing tickets, showing itself, um, eight seconds per show. It was very, pretty small. It's gonna be open to the public, three more letters, there's fourteen hours. It's more constant than, it's fifteen hours. Right now, it's not full. Fifty percent of our literature will hopefully be available. We'll have our show, but it won't be a lot. Nine feet stand. Right now, one show will be up the outside of four. Summer of our rest will be a celebration. Celebrate the Lord's peace. It'll be a, very little bit of a year. More than. We'll get it. And actually, we'll be getting ready for the first. Certain time, two years, three, three weeks, three, to be on each shore for one year. Uh, but it'll still be able to approach. For this area, for certain. Just maybe, certainly. This is from, I support the project.
Thank you. Not a problem. We'll welcome you back. And, uh, my wife, Mary, and I went to, uh, the performance that you had a short time ago and it was outstanding. It really, it was reminiscent of World War Two show that Bob Hope and, and people like that would put on. It was, it was very memorable and very, very well done. Thank you, sir.
Just one other comment about the American Legion Post Thirty-four. So they're kind of under the radar. A lot of us don't know really what, what they do in the community. So not only do they help us on our precious day of Memorial Day, and they made a nice contribution to the memorial, but they take care of forty-one veterans graves, those who were interred in our cemetery. And they, they make donations to all kinds of local five-oh-one C three's. We will make a, we'll make a thousand now. Various, for veterans. We also need support of our group. We support our group, connected to our, 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 support our. And so, so these men and women, they, they served us when they were young folks and they continue to serve us. They're a good organization.
Good, thank you. Okay, item number eight. Review discussion, possible action to approve resolution twenty-two-two dash zero-six, accepting and adopting the five-year capital improvement plan, otherwise known as the CIP, Mark. otherwise known as the CIP, Mark.
And to be. So it's a very looking at the third presentation, at the side, which we have to. Um, the version of the world. It's not completely covered. It's a question. Um, and these are items that are essentially either more than two thousand dollars or, um, uh, which is like such a large. So, as I said, it's a good time. You know, including, um, four, that resolution, second. About the fact.
I'd have a comment or two. The five-year plan, the first year is obviously more solid than two, three, four, five. And each year, those come up for separate budget consideration. And as literally all of our capital expenditures, we wait for the money, we budget for them because we cannot expend the money. If we don't budget for them, we do not spend the money, however, until the revenues are in hand. So it's a, it's a very conservative approach that we do. This is in the eight years that I, ten years I've been with the town. Um, this has been the approach and it's worked very well. So I think, you know, a lot of this is is road maintenance. If we ever let those get away from us, they are our largest single investment, it would be very, very difficult to to get them back. So you have three and a half and four million dollars in the next two years.
Very well. And the issue that I was trying to. And there's a big research out there, and so a dollar spent. Is going to cost. So in some.
Questions, comments?
All these items that are listed here, especially those in the first year. We don't, we're not obligating anything. Then. That's coming from council every year.
That's correct.
I think we had one request for Mr. Mattis to speak on on this topic.
I appreciate what you said about. At the end of the slide here, the document. Currently, we have possibly. What did it? The four hundred and eighty thousand from last budget. Except four of the patients on. Obviously. Uh, down with the four hundred and eighty thousand, sir. I'm just curious, if I could. So how there's a path? Where's the path? Yes, 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 we need those, because we require a number of them. Can't just say. What's wrong? Take all the research now, some of the old program. Before we face with the. Group. All of here. So. Propose a budget without proposing. Where do you get the proof? I mean, you do that to really have, personally, I'm sure. Propose a budget and no, we're not. I won't do that. I have the first one word. And it's published. The mix design.
Thank you.
Can I make a clarification? Just, just, is it? Just a clarification. It's not a budget. It's a planning document. So it rolls into, on a year-to-year basis, potentially the budget. But that is not a budget. That is just a roadmap of what we've identified as critical projects that need to get done. Also, also, our grants listed in there. So some of the money is going to come from BAG. Some of the money is going to come from the county. Drainage fund. But there, there's no guarantee that all that money and all those projects will be done in a hundred percent. But my experience in both business and government. It's standard operating procedure to have a capital improvement plan. And then if you can afford it based on need or or ability to pay, then it rolls into a budget on an annual basis. That's really important.
Yes. Thank you, Tony. Sheila, would you please?
Can I sit? Okay, well, that can be a lot of. It's supposed to be. If there's. I'm talking.
No, actually.
Well, we did.
Wait, wait a minute. There's one speaker and there's no.
We were on a call. So number one. The budget is an annual process with capital. And it's not on the level of, because like. Process for all local businesses, state, counties. If that is, the budget will last, as we said, then we have a program for that to go forward. If it does not, it does not. The money is rare. It's missing in the capital pool. Considering that that was a catch. If you're asking where it comes from, it's coming from the local. Having said that, I understand the concern about the economy. I see the family. Because they're historically responsible in the town. That even if it's a company, they want to leave, but it's still. About the state, if it's for me, where. From a very. State called California. So I know that we are heavy issues from very unknown territory. Pretending to be kind of. All of the world about this. And, but knowing this way, it's very difficult for individuals, particularly those. Because he's not a good boy, he's a bear. That is, and it's very, it's a very, it's tragic. And when in a situation, it's tragic for those people. So we do have to be careful. It's one of the reasons that I like my first priority in terms of how that goes, this whole responsibility. We have been fully responsible. We have. You don't understand, it's not more, very best for me, because why? Because no things are not. But it is highly. And this is one thing I will be focused on, to continue on. Being responsible. Of them. And we have to sit down with people, talk about. And help to share ideas and information for my.
Excuse me, if if we might, thank you so much.
I do, I do have a question. Gary, how many years have you been with the Town of Carefree?
Going on twenty years now.
Okay, so over that twenty-year period with road maintenance, um, a pandemic, at one point during those twenty years, our recession, um, are we at our highest in terms of our cash reserves? What are our cash reserves right now?
Uh, overall, cash reserves are just north of fourteen million dollars.
Okay. Would you say that right now that we are in the highest in cash reserves despite all the issues that we've dealt with in the past twenty years that you've been here?
Uh, yes, and it's interesting to note that it's bookmarked or in between two generational downturns in the economy in the Great Recession and the COVID shutdowns, and we are at the all-time high in our reserves. That's because of conservative, uh, uh, financial management.
So it it's safe to say that we are operating fairly fiscally responsible then?
Yes.
We have been, and and we show all promises of doing, continuing to do that in the future.
And and let it be said, during the course of those twenty years, we bought land to put a fire station on, we built a fire station. We built our own fire program. We built the town center gardens. We have this building and we made improvements. This is our first town council chambers. We have our first offices, which are the original offices of the development company that built Carefree. We never had town offices when I came here. We did millions of dollars in street projects over those twenty years.
So.
All investing in this community.
Thank you. And I'd like to say something else. And I read your letter, John, because you asked me, you you cornered me and you said you never respond. You never asked me to respond, but I read your letter. And our town staff is among the best in Arizona at what they do because they wear multiple hats and they have to wear multiple hats. We are a small, small town and we are a, a, a working council. So I don't believe that with what we have right now, that we cannot eliminate any positions. We cannot 1099 our staff because they are stretched and they work extremely hard. So I take offense with what you put in your letter regarding downsizing our staff. Because they work extremely hard and we are a very fiscally responsible council and staff. You're more than welcome to come in and talk to any of us at any time and not grandstand. Come in and talk to us. I did. Your letters and your statements.
Okay, okay. This is, this is not an open discussion item now.
Go in and talk to staff. That's my recommendation. Be informed. Come to meetings. Come to meetings.
Okay, possible action to approve Resolution 2022-06. Resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Carefree, accepting into the public record the five-year capital improvement program. Their motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Candace, would you please poll the council, or it seems to be working well too?
You're all here. You're all here and it's recorded.
Okay, fine. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine, review and approval of the flood control district allotment for design and construction of the East Carefree Drive at East Cave Creek Road Drainage Project. Uh, Mark?
So a little background, the open project of two thousand four, which is directed. About the reservation. Part of the decision to.
Mark, that's a county district, right?
That's the USP. And I'm proud to announce that we apply to that. And you qualify, um, the funds will go towards. It's a, um, very different. Um, funding, um, issue, issue that, uh, yes, it's all. And it's. It goes. The chances is. And it's undersized. Uh, the large issues are so. And so. So, uh, we find the funds on the state control district. It's starting to come to buy us with just under four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. On. We're requiring. And five. So I would ask that the resolution. Transformed to a challenge. It's authorized with the. To the first. America. I do. Not we take that CD twenty-two.
What's the timing on this? If we approve it, how long would it take? Best guess?
Thank you, Mr. Man. So this is the first year of the control district. Will allow it to buy the funds as part. But that won't happen. So I hope it's something. And I hope it's just the fact. That it's locked in. Whereby. I'm hoping you. So about nine months.
Mark, this, this improvement allow us to start taking care of the crosswalks along that stretch?
So. Um, no, this is just being the idea.
Does it have anything to do with that roadway, or is it just the flooding on that side?
Yeah, well, I mean.
Yeah, it, having been out there in times of intense rain. It, the, the culvers just can't handle it. It it overflows into condominiums on the ground floor. Uh, and this goes back to the county that has been happening since sixties or so.
Absolutely. And anybody willing to. And send.
Mayor, members of council, and just to further clarify, this will be part of next fiscal year. So all you're doing is executing the IGA tonight, authorizing the execution of that IGA. The funds won't be received until next fiscal year. So it will be part of the capital improvement plan for next fiscal year. In the five-year plan, you will see this illustrated for next fiscal year. In our budget, we will authorize the funding to marry with what's within the IGA.
Good. Thank you. Any further questions from the council? Hearing none, would accept the motion to approve, uh, the acceptance of the IGA. For the project which Mark just described.
I'll make a motion to accept the IGA.
Motion's been made.
Mayor, members of council, just to clarify, that's acceptance of Resolution 2022-07.
Okay, so that's, a motion has been made and seconded for item 2022-07. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Item number ten, review, discussion, and possible action to discuss a request for temporary, temporarily closed elbow bend road from side by the road to Nonchelon Avenue, allowing for business access from May ninth to May twenty-seven to install roadway pavement and final sidewalk improvements adjacent to the few condominiums.
Thank you, Mr. Man. This actually. So, um, what we have here is the restructuring of elbow bed. So as part of the. The elders. And elbow bed. Requires fixed road as an abstract. Perhaps in the center line. So, and maybe all of, we got the baseboards. We got new baseboards.
So there's no cost to the town, but it's the approval to close the road for that period. And both, both the land, adjacent landowners are in agreement on the timing. And it may take a little shorter.
Absolutely. We try to be conservative. Can we get the most money? And then if we get that shorter, another, another.
Fine.
It depends on how long they can get back to the base.
Any questions, comments? If not, I would accept a motion to approve the road closure as specified from May 9th to May 27th, adjacent to the few condominiums on Nonchelon, from Sidewinder Road to Nonchelon.
I'll make a motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Remaining item is item number 11, adjournment.
I'll make a motion.
Gerald makes a motion.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.